Ready to go?
Yeah.
I can't get in touch with him, so.
I got four.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Lunen Derry Town Council Meeting for May 3, 2021. Please all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Chief, you got an idea on a moment of silence tonight?
You know what? I am speechless, but I will say this, John. You know, every single day, we have people in our communities around the country going out to serve others, sometimes at risk of their lives, sometimes at risk of their psyche, oftentimes their health. And let us have a moment to think about them and their families to keep us safe every single day.
Thank you, Chief. Moment for those folks. Thank you. All right, so I have a couple of things to dispose of here in public comment. First, before I go to the audience, first item I have is, is I have a proclamation from the governor. So I'll read the proclamation. The State of New Hampshire, by His Excellency Christopher T. Sununu, Governor, a proclamation in the year of our Lord, 2021. This is Municipal Clerks Week, May 2 to May 8, 2021. Where has the office of the municipal clerk as a time honored and virtual part of local government that exists throughout the world? And the office of the municipal clerk is among the oldest public servants. Where has the office of the municipal clerk provides the professional link between the citizens, the local governing bodies, and the agencies of government at other levels? And where has the municipal clerks have pledged to be ever mindful of their neutrality, impartiality, and rendering equal service to all? Where has the municipal clerk serve as the information center of functions of the local government and the community? And where has municipal clerks continue to strive to improve the administration of the affairs of the office of the municipal clerk through the participation in education programs, seminars, workshops, and annual meetings of their state, provincial, county, and international professional organizations? And where has it is appropriate that we recognize the accomplishments of the office of the municipal clerk and thank them for their vital services they perform, as well as their exemplary dedication of communities that they represent? Now therefore, I, Christopher T. Sununu, Governor of the State of New Hampshire, do hereby proclaim May 2 to the 8, 2021, as Municipal Clerks Week in the State of New Hampshire, and call this to the attention of all citizens. Signed, Day, the 28th of April, 2021, by Christopher T. Sununu. So I want to say thank you to our clerks. I think Sherri and Christie are here tonight, Allison, and I think, who just had a baby?
Christina.
Christina just had a baby, so she's out on maternity leave. But thank you, ladies. Very much appreciate everything you do and keeping all the revenue coming in for the town. Now, I also have a letter from Deanna Millie, 8 Valley Street, to the Chair of the Town Council. What is going on at the Kendall Pond area? Deb Paul stated at the 419 council meeting that she recently, she has seen landscapers there taking water. What can we do about it? I think they need permission and maybe it should be posted. I would like to know how recent and see the evidence such as pictures. Today, everyone does that on their cell phones. It also shows the date and time when they're taken. It's also proof police can enforce. I have not heard of or seen a problem since 2017, when the ordinance came into being. In 2020, the commercial and town manager or his designated could implement an ordinance during the drought conditions was added. I applaud our landscapers for respecting and honoring the ordinance since 2017. I only wish our town council had implemented the drought ordinance in 2020 when it was badly needed. The council could take an example from the landscapers. After Deb Paul's remarks at the council meeting, the landscapers were notified police, surprisingly, on Saturday, 4/24, I noticed something black hanging on the Kendall Pond sign. It was, it covered the wording. I contacted the conservation police officer, left the message, and when his phone, when his phone said he was not available. I called the Lunen Derry Police Department to see if he was on duty. Yes, he was. I received no response from him. Later, I saw the black object had been removed. I was told he sent someone to take care of it. Later learned it was a police officer. Also, the object was a bag of poop. Hopefully, this was not a response by a landscaper to Deb Paul's remarks and a subsequent visit by the police notifying them of the town's management response. If so, please do not respond in a negative manner. You landscapers, I feel, have been doing well respecting and honoring our ordinance. All of this is appreciated. Believe me, thank you. Deanna Millie, 8 Valley Street. Thank you, Ms. Millie. Let's see, what else we got for public comment? Let me dispose of this real quickly. Oh, no, that's a public hearing. So anyone else this evening for public comment? Yes, sir. Town manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have some introductions I'd like to make to the council this evening. We had a number of new hires that occurred at Town Hall during COVID, and these weren't new positions, but they were filling positions that had been vacant due to the hiring freeze that we had going on for some time. And they're from three different departments, and in honor of Clerks Week, I'm going to start with the town clerk's office and introduce our newest town clerk. And if you wouldn't mind standing when I call your name, you don't have to go anywhere, but if you could stand up, if you don't mind, our first person is Sherri Fuller. And Sherri is our newest Assistant Clerk. She comes to us from the private sector, having worked both in the legal and human resources field prior to joining us at Town Hall. So welcome, Sherri. Next, I'll move on to the Department of Public Works. And the first person I'd like to introduce is Denise Manella. There's Denise. So Denise is our new DPW Assistant. She actually took the place of Laura, who is now in our Assessing Department. And she came to us right across the street, having worked at Matthew Thornton for several years as a Special Education Assistant. And we're very happy to have Denise on board, as I know DPW is as well, although Denise came on, as I said, after COVID hit and Janosh was out of the office. So I think she's probably seen John more in her time than she ever saw Janosh. But we're very happy to have Denise here. So welcome, Denise. Next, we have Jose Lovell. Jose is our new Assistant DPW Director. Where's Jose? There you are, in the back, Jose. Jose is an engineer with 18 years' experience. And while this is his first time as a municipal employee, much of his career has been spent working on municipal projects as an engineering consultant. Jose also serves on the City of Manchester ZBA and has served on a couple of planning boards as well. So he's very familiar with how the municipal board and committee functions process. And so we're very happy to have Jose on board with us now. And finally, we have, in our Building Department, we had many new hires there in the past year, starting with Norma Dietrich. Norm is the newest to the Building Department, but she's our new Code Enforcement Officer. She joins us from the town of Henniker, where she served as the Building Inspector and Code Enforcement Officer there for three years. So welcome, Norma. Next up, we have is Brad Anderson. And Brad actually started as our Code Enforcement Officer in the Building Department. And he was recently promoted to the Assistant Building Inspector. Brad began his career in the commercial and residential plumbing, heating, and septic. And then he transitioned into welding and fabrication for the majority of his career prior to joining us in the Building Department. So we're happy to have Brad aboard with us. And last, but certainly by no means least, we have Nick Codner. And Nick is our newly minted Chief Building Inspector, whom you all appointed recently, having replaced Richard Canuel. Nick came to us from the private sector, where he operated his own general contracting business for over 30 years, building hundreds of residential and commercial projects in New Hampshire and Massachusetts, many of them right here in Lunen Derry. And Nick has actually done it all now in our Building Department. He started off as the Code Enforcement Officer, and then he moved up into being the Assistant Building Inspector, and now he serves as our Chief Building Inspector and Deputy Health Officer. And kind of a neat little factoid about Nick, he actually worked on building the bandstand that is at our Town Common. So Nick, welcome aboard again. And those are all the introductions I have for this evening. And so if there's no objection from the council, I'd like to release all of them.
Of course.
You're free to move about the building. Thank you all for coming this evening.
Is there anyone else for public comment this evening? Yes, Chief.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm Bill Hart. I'm the police chief here in town. I just wanted to take a quick minute. Since next council meeting, we're going to be introducing some folks along with, I believe, the Fire Department to just give a quick sort of 10,000-foot overview of staffing at the PD lately. COVID hit pretty hard timing-wise. We were down five folks and five folks retired in that year. So for a while there, we've been, in the last 15 months, down as many as 10 people. Some of that loss, as you know, was allayed by the movement of officers from the airport, which shrank its force a little bit. So we were able to take them townside since we had those empty positions. That's about to change the other way. Those officers, based on the passenger traffic at the airport, are beginning to move back to the airport in terms of their assignments. Additionally, we've been able to hire some great folks in the last several months, beginning with Tyler McDonald, who came aboard just at the end, I think the last day of 2019. But since then, you know, partly, I believe, because of the concerns nationwide revolving around police and the current status of that type of a job, we've had some challenges. That said, though, we've hired two new folks. Joanna Van, who is the only person that I've ever, who applied as a dispatcher, that I've ever offered a job as a police officer on the spot. She was outstanding young woman, who now is in field training for the Police Department. And today, Brittany Wright started at the Police Academy. We have three people in a background process, so we're making some segue back to what we think of as full staffing. But I did want to give you that quick overview of how things are going for us and the challenges we faced over the year of COVID. I take any questions that you might have.
Questions for the chief?
Thank you very much for your time, Mr. Chairman. If there's no questions?
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Anyone else for public comment this evening? Seeing none, we'll move to a public hearing.
Can I make a motion to open the public hearing?
All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes affirmative. Public hearing is now open. Public hearing is for the acceptance of unanticipated revenue in New Hampshire DES Drinking and Groundwater Trust Fund. Mr. Malaguti.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. And as the, as the council knows, soon the town will be closing on the purchase of two parcels at 114 Pillsbury Road. This is the Moose Hill Orchards tract. And as everybody knows, the first five acres nearest the street is being acquired for municipal purposes. The back 21 and change is being acquired for conservation purposes. I like to make things as simple as possible, so I'll try to keep this in bullet point format. The state wants to give us $385,000 to protect drinking water sources in town. It just so happens that there are two significant wellhead protection areas that are centered around the Southview condominium complex, as well as the Century Village area. And a big chunk of those wellhead protection areas overlaps with our conservation tract. We're not giving up very much at all. In exchange for this money, we're giving the state some use restrictions that are centered around protecting this area, and specifically protecting the drinking water. Where it's conservation land and is being protected anyway, I don't, I don't see a significant downside. The packet contains the backup documentation, including the grant agreement, the certificate of authority, that the council giving the town manager the ability to sign the necessary paperwork. And there's also the proposed deed in this packet as well, so the council can get a look at what the actual use restrictions would entail. I'm happy to take any questions that the council may have.
Does anyone on the council have any questions for, for Mike Malaguti? Good? Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing. So if you have any questions regarding this anticipated, unanticipated revenue coming from the state, you know, please address the council. This would be the time. Yes, sir. Sir, can you please come forward and have your name and address for the record?
Ray Burson, 3 Gary Drive. I think it's very good that the town is purchasing this property, both for the town and for the Conservation Commission. One thing I want to say, though, is the grant money that's coming to the town is, can I ask, is that for the purchase of both the five acres and the conservation 23?
Mr. Malaguti?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. The answer to that question is no. It's just for the conserved parcel.
Okay. Okay. But the other thing I do want to mention is that these wellhead protection areas, particularly Century Village, is extremely important. And they, a lot of these wellhead protection areas and other private wells have issues with contamination that we, in the town, are going to have to deal with. Some of this grant money needs to, I assume some of it has already been put in for, some of this grant money needs to come to the town for whatever we're going to do to address the contamination of water in potentially some of these wellhead protection areas that are not municipal water to these apartments and other condominium complexes that do not have municipal water. These are all things that we in town are going to have to address. The simple fix is not to bring municipal water to everybody in town. That may happen down the road, but that may be a long road we've got to take. So the grant money that we get, we have to be very careful what we're going to use it for. Thank you for your time.
You're welcome.
Oh, one other thing. The town has stepped up and moved in the correct direction to address the contamination issues. And I applaud the town and the people who have volunteered to step up. That's, that's a great thing. Thank you.
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone else who would like to address the council regarding this particular issue?
Mr. Chairman, if I, if I may just address one of those points, which is reference the Drinking and Groundwater Protection Trust Fund. We've been very much impressed with, with their willingness to work with us to look at other potential uses for that trust fund money in town. And I can tell the council that the town staff is engaged in those efforts, not just focused on the MAC parcel, but on other potential projects as well. So, so that is something that's being taken into consideration.
Thank you. Anything further?
Just a quick question. Oops, sorry. Just a quick question. So this money can be used for specifically what?
It's used-
For the people outside who can't see the documents?
Correct. So this, this $385,000 is being used to fund the town's purchase through the Conservation Commission of the 21 acres that is just adjacent to the Town Hall parcel next door.
Okay. I just wanted people to understand what, like, we can't just go do things with it. It's got a specific use.
Sure, no, that's, that's right. It's dedicated for this particular use.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? So you need a vote to accept the revenue, but I'm going to be doing that under new business.
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'll take a motion to close the public hearing. All those in favor, signal by saying aye. Thank you, sir. All right, new business ordinance, 2021-01, an amendment to the zoning ordinance relative to the rezoning of 271 and 275 National Road map 2 lots 2810 and 2811. This is a first reading. Colleen, are you here? Yes. Do you want, before I move and dispense with the first reading, do you want to give us a little brief synopsis of what this is about? Thank you, Colleen.
So this is a rezoning request, to rezone two parcels located on National Road. The initial request that went to the planning board was for four parcels. There was quite a bit of public input at the planning board, and the planning board has made a recommendation that the Town Council rezone two of the parcels from AR1 and Performance Overlay District to a Commercial 2 zone and retain the Performance Overlay District. So we'll be happy to give more information. You have information in your packet, but we'll give a full presentation at the public hearing in a couple of weeks.
Absolutely.
If you have to answer any questions.
Now, remember, this is the one with the private driveway, coming off of 102.
Yes. Yep, driveway off 102, correct.
Okay. All right, folks, I will take a motion to waive public, first reading?
So move.
Second.
All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes affirmative. Thank you, Colleen. Ladies and gentlemen, the public hearing for this will be on May 17 at 7:00 PM. Resolution 2021, a resolution amending the PFA Task Force to Drinking Water Task Force, presented by Councilor Dolan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The PFAS Task Force has made a lot of progress, and we're getting close to having a workshop in the, in the high school cafeteria for, for both testing services for wells beyond what DES is doing, and also mitigation opportunities and plans presented by local vendors. And that's basically, do you have a problem? And secondly, if you have a problem, what's available to do something about it and what, what it's going to cost? Along this road, we've come across, well, let me back up a little bit. This, this initiative really centered around the discovery, the recent discovery of the PFAS problem, and especially as it's emanated from across, from a manufacturer across the river, and has given us airborne pollution that has settled onto the ground and leaked down into our, our water, our drinking wells and so forth. So, but we have had, we have discovered, and we've become more aware of the fact that we have had indigenous drinking water problems in the town with arsenic and other chemicals for many years. So this, this, the PFAS issue, although it's, it's getting the most press and is the thing that is, that really spurred this task force, it's kind of taken us back and reminded us of the, of the drinking water problems we've been living with for several decades. So the, the initial thought here was to take the PFAS Task Force mission, as it was ascribed to the task force in, in the, in the resolution, and expand it, expand the scope to include these other drinking water problems, and therefore rename it from a PFAS Task Force to a Drinking Water Task Force, so we can, we can, we can take up the other contaminants that are in people's wells as well. If, for example, if I, if, use myself as an example, as a hypothetical example, that if I have a water test that comes back and says, yes, I have a PFAS problem in my drinking water, but I have these other half a dozen problems as well, would I employ a mitigation to just fix the PFAS and, and not address the other ones? Or would I pick a mitigation that might take care of all the problems or take care of most of the problems? That would, that's a, that's an issue that we're struggling with on the task force. Our assistant town manager looked at the proposal and raised some, I would say, very legitimate concerns about the, the topic of PFAS and then expanding it, and perhaps expanding it beyond the scope of what may be mitigatable, if that's a real, if that's a term, that could be mitigated with the available monies that we think are going to become available. And if, and could we, no pun intended, could we contaminate our efforts here by including things that aren't intended in the, in the available money that may become available? So that's something for the council to consider, whether or not you want to expand it as I've, as you have in front of you in that new resolution. Or another way would be to, would be to continue as we are with trying to solve the PFAS issue, and then subsequent to that, take up other drinking water issues in addition to that once we get a handle on the PFAS. So there's, I think there's two approaches there that, that, that we could take. Lisa, is that, is that, am I accurately describing what you were suggesting?
Yes.
So, so I think, you know, there are two ways to go forward. I'm, I am okay with either way. I think, I think we need to address both. They don't have to be concurrent. They can be separate, solve one and then solve the other. But I'll let you guys talk about it.
Sure, of course.
Lisa, so thank you for bringing that up, because the first thing, as I'm reading this, I'm saying to myself, well, what if this disqualifies us to the point here for getting any settlement or in the future, you know, somebody's forced to pay specifically on the PFAS? Do we know if that would disqualify us if we, if we combine them? Because that would help me to make the decision.
Right. I don't know that it would necessarily disqualify us if there were ever to be some sort of litigation with St. Gobain, for example, as we think is the, the main contributor to the PFAS issue in town. What I was more concerned about in terms of expanding the scope is, right now, all of the focus is on PFAS, PFOA, PFAS, with regard to federal legislation, state efforts, grant programs, et cetera. And so if we were, if as a result of the work of the PFAS Task Force, we then were to apply for a grant for a particular mitigation strategy, I wouldn't want to be disqualified because we're now, you know, we're also, we're finding out, you know, this section of town has more arsenic, and we would like to remediate this that way, and it, we can take care of PFAS and arsenic at the same time if we do X, you know? I just worry about that, again, just because all of these monies that seem to be available and will hopefully be able to take advantage of are specifically targeted to the PFAS issue.
It does sound like hearing from, you know, what you said earlier and, and listening to some of the, of the meetings, that it's almost even- some of the meetings, that it's almost evolving into something that we didn't originally think it was going to be. And with evolution, I think, you know, just my opinion, you think you deal with the first one, make sure it's 100% where it needs to be, cross all the Ts, dot all the Is, and then that group maybe evolves into the bigger expansion of complete water in the town. So that's just a thought.
If I could just make one more point, too. All of the testing that DES has been doing with regard to PFAS is only for PFAS, PFOA, PFAS. They're not also testing for these other compounds that Councilor Dolan mentioned. So the data that we have right now is PFAS-related. It's only if someone pays for a complete panel, if you will, saying they want to have all the contaminants tested for, that someone would even know that they have an arsenic problem, or if they're doing their own well testing, right, on a yearly basis or biannual basis.
But I think this is why we've heard, you know, over the past few months, this is exactly the reason why we have all these, these questions coming up, because it's, when you do it, you're not just testing for one normally, most people are testing for many other things, like you said, the panel. So, and this is exactly what you said, I mean, I've heard from people and saying, oh, what about this, what about that? You've had it, to your point, for 20 years, 15 years, you just didn't know it until this came out. So I just, I just think it's a progression, you know, but...
Yeah, the thing that is, that is, one of the difficult things to wrap your arms around is the fact that these, the levels of chemicals are constantly changing. So what was fine 10 years ago may not be fine anymore, but the level in your well may be exactly the same. It's just that the limit that the agency, whether the state agency or the federal agency has put on it, has changed, and therefore has made people more concerned. And in some cases, the level of concern in New Hampshire is far greater, set by our environmental scientists, is far greater in terms of lower, the allowable amount is a lot lower in New Hampshire than most other states. And I, common sense tells me that that's, that's going to change, and either all the other states are going to come down to New Hampshire, or New Hampshire's going to come up to the, all the other states. So I think that's a, it's a dynamic environment, no pun intended, and we don't know what the, what the future limits are going to be. So I would say that, I would compliment Lisa, she's very, and I'm sure Kevin was involved in this too, but I think being sensitive to the political issues that are, that are before us with regard to available monies, I think is something to be wise about, so that we, we don't, we don't pursue a solution that maybe in its purest form is probably the right solution, but hasn't, has no money associated with it, and then the entire financial burden falls on the taxpayers. Whereas if we cut it up, we may be able to get applicable money by the chemical that we're, we're trying to solve for, and then come back and attack the other chemicals later. And that, those other chemicals may be on our taxpayers' backs.
Because I think if you expand your charge too much, I mean, you kind of watered down, choose the expression, but by the pun, you watered down what you're trying to actually try to get at.
So I guess what I'm saying is, I, having heard Lisa explain her concerns and, and the political sensitivity associated with that, I know we ask our town staff to be apolitical, but I think being, understanding of the political environment is something that I have to give her a lot of credit for, and I, I would recommend that we probably follow her advice on this.
And I would like to echo that. We should have two different paths, and one of the reasons is, as you were just saying, throughout the town, as we find more contamination by different sources, meaning we still have to source out who the other people are, who are the contaminants, maybe out of business, maybe gone, which that would allow us to go after grants that, you know, they're gone now, we have no one to go after.
Yep.
This is some, like some of the Superfund sites, or, you know, something that happened up at the airport, or, you know, whatever, that would allow us to get more money. And I, I think that's a smart move, but I do think we need to have two sort of things moving at the same time, but in two different venues.
Right.
Because I do think it is important all around.
Right.
So having something permanent.
Might I suggest this, Mr. Chairman, that, that we, we solve the PFAS problem first, get it? When I say solve it, mitigate it, get that taken care of. But then we should, as a council, whether this council or from a timing standpoint, next year's council, depending on how long this takes, that, that, at that point, it might make sense to take up a, not as a, as a temporary project, but maybe as a permanent project, in that we have a permanent committee, like a budget committee almost, but a permanent committee that, that focuses on our drinking water and, and keeps an eye on that, and takes up issues and pursues grants and so forth, and looks at the, more of the long-term picture and those, some of those, those issues that folks have been dealing with in their wells for many, many years, and how we, how we mitigate that, and not, in the, in the short term, not miss any of the opportunity for PFAS mitigation funding that is currently available and that we should apply for in the very short term and see if we can secure that. And then, like I said, later, have the council consider a drinking water committee that keeps an eye on that for the community.
Mr. Chairman, so would we suggest table this indefinitely? Is that how we would deal with the resolution?
We can just kill it.
Okay.
And just leave the resolution in place.
Right.
I don't even have to bring it to a vote.
I'm in favor of that.
Yeah, good. That's why you want to do it.
Okay, with regards to this resolution, we're going to discard it and move on. I did speak with Congressman Papas's staff today, and the, they did confirm that the delegation from New Hampshire is focused strictly on PFAS right now and PFOAs. In addition to that, I've had a number of conversations with residents who have been calling, saying they've been having delivery problems with Menadnock Water. I had a conversation with Nathan Curtis at Menadnock Water, and we had asked DES to inform them of new homes. Nathan shared with me that he's gone from 300 deliveries in Londonderry to now 600 deliveries since November. So from November till now, he's gone from 300 to 600. And that I did send Mike Winslet a email, never heard back from him, and that he's not getting the information ahead of time. So they only have a limited number, limited capacity and a limited number of trucks to do the delivery. So Kevin, if you could follow up with them and make sure that they are providing that information to the vendor, he wants to do a good job, he just needs to know.
Sure.
Nice chat with him and everything else. He's very easy to work with. So when people are calling him, he's not calling people back because he's getting hundreds of calls, but he's recording them and getting to everybody and getting their water delivered as fast as possible. And he's overall seemed like a really good guy. All right? Anything else on this? Okay. Next item. Resolution 2021-12. This is the resolution to accept the unanticipated revenue, which was presented by, by Mike Malaguti. Do we have any questions?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we, we accept the resolution and accept the trust fund.
Second.
Good? All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes affirmative. Thank you very much. Okay. Old business. We have no old business approval of minutes. I'm looking for a motion to approve the minutes as presented in our packet for April 19th, 2021.
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes affirmative. Minutes are approved. Looking here for, we have a recommendation to, to appoint a new member to, a new alternate member to the task force, and his name is, I just have to get back to his application here. Wasn't it Richard? Was that it?
Richard Lombard.
Yes, Mr. Lockard. Any objections?
No, I'd like to say also thank you to Katie, who had a unfortunate situation in her family that caused her to resign from the task force, but I thank you for her efforts.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a recommendation to approve Mr. Richard Lombard and appoint him to the task force.
Let's have a second.
Second.
All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Mr. Lockard, Mr. Lombard, please see the clerk and be sworn in. Thank you very much. Okay. Liaison reports. Do we have anything new on liaison reports? So listen, while we're, while we're here on liaison reports, I have received phone calls, and I'm not really enjoying having this conversation. I'm receiving phone calls from chair, the chairpeople of different committees asking me to attend each of their meetings. If you are a town counselor and you attend someone else's meeting, for example, if I go to the planning board meeting and I'm not voting, or I'm at the zoning board meeting, I say, I'm John Farrell for Hancock Drive, member of the town council. If I go to the school board meeting, I say, I'm John Farrell for Hancock Drive, member of the town council. So when you go there, say that. You're, you're elected, you're representing the council, whether you're, whether you're there or not, you are elected to the position. If you're going to other meetings and you're getting up and you're making statements, make sure you're 100% factual in what you say. Make sure you got it absolutely 100% right, because people are going to come back if you don't, and they're going to come and they're going to make a phone call and say, you know, so-and-so was here, and they said such and such, and it wasn't right. That isn't what happened. Make sure you're 100% right. If you have questions about what should be for the town manager, take them to the town manager. If you have questions that are about things that should be discussed at the town council meeting, bring them to the town council meeting, and we'll talk about them here. So just make sure that when you're, when you're going to these different meetings, make sure that you, if you say something along the lines of such and such happened 10 years ago, and it was this, this, and this, and that's not what happened, it will come back to haunt you. So make the right decision, do your homework, and make sure you're right before you make a statement. Anything?
Thank you.
Okay. Town manager report.
Just a couple of items. First, there's an Old Home Day Committee meeting this Thursday at 6:00. It'll be here in the Moose Hill Conference Room. The second item is tomorrow evening at 7:00, the school board meeting. I'll be making a brief presentation on the Tiff District, as is required by state law. I've also notified the county. They don't anticipate having me in, but they are aware that we are considering this, and we'll be taking it up at our next council meeting.
Is that it for you?
That's it.
Lisa, anything from you, assistant town manager's report?
Just a couple quick things. Your weekly or biweekly drought update, nothing has changed. We're still in the moderate drought category. We'll see if anything changes as of this Thursday's map. I will report again at the 5/17 meeting, anticipating the council, if we are still in drought status, as of 5/31, the council wanted to impose the lawn watering restrictions. But I'll keep you posted, because a prerequisite of, prerequisite of that, of course, is that we are still in drought status as of that point. The second thing, Leadership Londonderry, the current class will have their graduation on June 10th. The class of 21, 22 applications are available on our website, and the deadline for application is June 11th.
Fantastic. Thank you. All right, so one final evening, one final thing for this evening. The town council received somewhere between 20 and 40 emails from an organization talking about that we were going to implement a mask ordinance. So for public record, we don't have a mask ordinance. We don't have one on our agenda to implement. What I'd like to be able to discuss before we leave tonight is, is what is going to be our policy going forward regarding masks here at Town Hall? So I believe the town manager has a recommendation that he'd like to discuss with us.
Yeah, so, you know, our biggest concern before we lifted the requirement to have a mask at Town Hall was that all Town Hall employees who want the opportunity to receive a vaccination have had that opportunity to be fully vaccinated. And so we did send out an inquiry to town staff to check in on the status of that, and what we learned is that, of everyone who responded to us, that the last person would be fully vaccinated, meaning they've had their second shot plus two weeks by May 18th. And so after that date, again, based on the feedback we received, everyone who wants to have had a shot will have had one and been vaccinated.
So May 18th will be the day after our next town council meeting, so if something dramatically changes between now and then, what I'm hearing is, is that you're recommending we move to let the employees remove their masks after May 18th, May 18th, starting May 18th?
Correct.
All right. I've also discussed with the town attorney if we were allowed to post on the building a, a sign that says, if you're, we'd have to find the right wording for it, if you are non-vaccinated or you are unvaccinated, we would please wear your mask. And he said that that would, you can certainly ask, was his, was his statement. We'd have to come up with the right verbiage for that. I'm assuming all the plexiglass will stay up?
Yeah, so the intent is to keep the plexiglass up.
Okay. Any questions on the masks? Anybody want to do anything different? Anything else to talk about tonight?
I would just like to ask, Kevin, do you think it's possible to tape the Old Home Day meeting? Or have it, you know, so people who can't attend or don't even know that it's going on?
Yeah, absolutely.
You know, at least they can watch it and maybe get involved, because I know we're going to need volunteers.
Yep.
Big time for that, because some people are still unsure whether or not we're going to do it.
Yeah.
I'd appreciate it. The other thing is, I just want to say that we are having a great success in collecting bags, me and the bag ladies of Londonderry. The best part of it all was, we got two truckloads from North School, and the teachers were astound, that the kids were astonished, that we waste so much, which to me was the biggest accomplishment of everything that we are trying to accomplish. So we will have another collection on the 8th, and then at our plant sale on June 5th.
Food?
I'm sorry?
Bags of food?
No, just trash bags.
Grocery bags.
Grocery bags and, and bags that you put your bread in, and all the envelopes that you get from UPS and things like that, soft plastic. We collect 40,000 bags, which is approximately 5,000 pounds, by August, and we get a free Trex bench for the garden that we're putting in. And who knows, maybe we'll collect more than that, and we've already had some people who have had dibs on the extra benches. So we'll see what happens. But it, it's great, because kids are figuring out that we throw a lot away.
I have a good question for Lisa.
Sure, of course.
Different subject.
Yeah, of course.
Lisa, Leadership Londonderry, is it going to be a graduation ceremony?
Yes, it's going to be small still due to COVID restrictions, but we're going to have it at the Morrison House, and it's going to be on June 10th.
Can you send us invitations?
Sure.
Thanks.
Okay.
Oh, the Morrison House got added to the, the...
Historical.
Thank you.
Up to the historical?
Yeah, it got added, even though it was moved, and that's a really big accomplishment. It's one of the oldest houses in the state, so that's pretty cool, even though it was moved.
Will we get a certificate for that or something?
I don't know. I got the press release.
I believe Cherston's going to come in and see us.
Is she?
She sent an email right before the town council meeting. So I think she's going to come in and, and let us know what, how it all worked out.
Yeah, it worked out great, I think. Maybe we'll get a nice state plaque.
So, one other item.
Yep.
Sort of of a, I guess of a historic note. So this past Friday, Moose Hill Orchards was sold, and there is a new owner. It closed this past Friday, is that right, Mike?
Based on the information that we have.
And we've told that it has closed. We, Jim and I and Mike Malaguti met with the new owner. They intend on keeping all of the same covenants in place that are within the Conservation Eastman. They are, he is looking forward to meeting with the Conservation Group and the Commission, working with them on the other parcels. The school board chair has assured me that they want him to continue to farm the land that's in front of Moose Hill. They definitely still have an interest in farming the land that is... Uh, they definitely still have an interest in farming the land that is, um, adjacent to Town Hall that the town is buying, and that he notified me that he has not had a discussion with, um, Mr. Richard Flyer, who owns the land over on Adams Room behind his home, yet about farming that as well. So, um, seems like a nice gentleman, lives in Derry, um, he's gonna be out to meet the community, I think he's on vacation this week, and that, um, hopefully we will see, um, new things coming from Max Apples.
Have to invite him into a council, a future council meeting?
Yeah, I, I think he's just, just getting, I think it's a good idea, and I think he's just starting to get his, um, get his feet on the ground. The farmhouse, um, and the house behind the farmhouse, and the, uh, I, my, I, the Mr. Randy Mack will still be living in the bunk house behind, um, the farm, and those parcels will still remain in the Mack family. So that is, um, that is public information, and, um, and to the best of our knowledge, it closed on Friday. Kind of a sad and historic note. Anything else? I'll accept a motion to adjourn.
So move, Mr. Chairman. Second.
All those in favor, sing them by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes affirmative, we adjourn. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, we'll see you on May seventeenth at seven P M.